All right, good evening. I'd like to call the meeting to order. Roll call please.
Thank you, Mr. President. Mrs. Carrier?
Yes.
Mrs. Jones?
Here.
Mrs. Mazur?
Here.
Mr. Methman?
Here.
And Mr. Vedder?
Here.
Let's do the Pledge of Allegiance.
Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, in the business with liberty and justice for all.
Welcome Tyler. Good to see you here. Technology report. What do you have for us?
Little shortest reports for you. The wireless went well this summer, but pretty well. New interface for us as technology got so we've been learning. We had a gentleman come in and give us some in-house instruction, which was very nice. It was part of the project. And so far, so good. Not on wood, has all that technology. Other than that, it's been decently quiet, so that's a wonderful thing for us.
Good deal. That was the shortest report.
No, no, you heard mine.
All right. Thank you. Moving on to principals' reports.
I can. Uh-oh. You jinxed yourself.
See, I knew it.
Yeah, I can go. I can go.
Well, that's fun and exciting.
I did up there and I did up the bottom. I did.
And the light's on on your pencil?
I didn't know I had one.
I didn't know I had one, I didn't. Okay. We want to try to troubleshoot this or keep moving? Okay, all right. Okay, principal reports.
Good to go?
Yes, sir.
I was nominated to go first. I normally have to go in the middle, be in middle school, so they let me go first tonight. Junior high sports are in full swing at the moment. We're real proud our football team has been able to have a regular junior high schedule while also adding some seventh grade football games as well because their numbers are so big. So, we're excited about that. Our volleyball team and our cross-country team, they will both participate in GMCs on October 14th. We're really proud of the seasons we've had so far. Lot of great things we're seeing out there from our student athletes, and we wish them luck as they head down the stretch of their seasons. Next, many of our middle school teachers, and I know this is kind of happening district-wide as well, but are beginning their benchmark testings and their pre-assessment testings, and that's in full swing here. And this just helps our teachers gather that beginning-of-the-year data over our students and really helps them start to prepare to use this data to help drive their instruction in their classrooms. So, we're gathering that testing and that data, and that's going really well. On September 27th, this deals with high school and middle school. The band "Add-a-Boy" will be coming to our school. They're going to perform a small show that includes an inspirational message focused on good character and making good choices. So, we're excited about that. They'll have a one-hour session with our middle schoolers and then a one-hour session with our high schoolers. And then that night, September 27th, they'll do a concert that evening at 7:00 in the high school gym where it'll be free of charge to the students. So, really looking forward to that and the message that they share to us and the positivity that that brings our students. And then finally, we're in the early stages of preparing for our district-wide parent teacher conferences. Those will take place on Wednesday, October 18th, from 3:15 to 6:00, and Thursday, October 19th, from 3:15 to 7:45. That's the middle school side of things.
Thanks, Tony.
And here in the high school, our year's off to a good start so far. Many events already happening very soon. Got some sporting event info to share with you, as did Tony. So, our boys and girls golf teams will compete in the GMC golf tournament tomorrow at 9:00 a.m. at Ironwood. The boys then will compete in sectional golf next Tuesday at Ironwood, and the girls will compete next Thursday at Auglaze. For cross-country, they're in the GMC tournament on Saturday, October 14th at Edgerton, and then districts will be held on October 21st at Napoleon. And then our big event this week, homecoming week, we have our annual homecoming parade and football game on Friday. The parade will begin at 5:45 at the fairgrounds as usual. Travel down South Maple Street, turn onto High Street, and then onto North Bryan Street to the football stadium. We look forward to having another full parade this year with many groups and organizations from Hicksville and the school participating, and we've even been getting some more even the last couple of days, so people are eager to participate again. And then the homecoming game starts at 7:00 as the Aces take on the Pilots of Ayresville. Homecoming dance then is the following night on Saturday from 8:00 to 11:00 p.m. Cost is $10 per student, and tickets will be on sale at the door. And then school picture day, school-wide, is scheduled for Friday, September 29th. This year on the high school side, we're starting a new tradition, and we're going to have all of our senior students dress up for their photo. This will allow us to have a senior composite created with our students' informal attire that we can then display at graduation. And then I just wanted to share a few happenings here within the high school building that's kind of unique to us here at Hicksville. Mrs. Blue Students started their sweet shop back up for the year. This is a small student-run business where they sell baked goods and pop to the teachers as a way of learning entrepreneurial skills within their class. And then our senior girls have started self-defense training. They started it last week in Mrs. Van Horn's senior seminar class. This course is taught by a trained instructor, and it takes place once a week over several weeks. And Mr. Freeze shared with me today that he's been in contact with the contractor for the studio building, and they have a projection of mid-October for the install of that equipment. So then our goal is for a daily live broadcast to begin during second semester, which would be January. That's all I get?
Thank you.
Well, the elementary is off to a great start. It's been busy with some new implementations this year, but it seems as if students are beginning to fall into a routine. I guess I just wanted to start off by recognizing some resources that we really benefit from here at Hicksville. Huge thanks to the United Way of Defiance. They supply food bags that go home with a variety of our students on Friday. A thank you to Hicksville Rotary for packing and delivering those bags to us during midweek. And also a huge thanks to the Defiance Area Foundation for sponsoring clothes for kids. The students that benefit from that receive a variety of necessities, as well as a nice outfit, a new pair of tennis shoes, and a Hicksville shirt. And it's very evident that these kiddos really appreciate it. They proudly wear those new items. We have an informational night coming up. All students in grades kindergarten through three have been benchmarked by our title team. Detailed progress reports were sent home last week, and all grade-level interventions actually began today. This is the earliest I've ever seen our interventions start. So, a huge thanks to Jamie Altman and her group. Parents of any students in grades one through three who are identified as well below benchmark will be invited or have been invited to an informational night in the Commons on October 2nd from 5:30 to 6:30. A free meal will be provided, and our title team will explain the intervention process and answer any questions that parents may have. Growing God's Way, our after-school Christian program, starts this Monday, September 25th, for students in grades one through four. Kindergarten will actually start on October 30th. A huge thanks to the teachers and staff who volunteer their time to provide this amazing opportunity for our students. Currently, we have 60 students registered, but we have room for more. Transportation home is provided to students who live within our district, so I just encourage you to contact the elementary office if there are any more kiddos out there that are interested. We also have a gifted informational night coming up. This will be led by Jane Myers, our ESC consultant and gifted coordinator. This is for any parents who have children that have been identified as gifted. She will share information about the gifted identification process and how Hicksville plans to service these students. The meeting is scheduled for September 21st in the Commons. And just to kind of piggyback off of Mr. Highlander with the school pictures, we have actually contracted a new company this year. I'm super excited. Their pictures are amazing. It's Lang Photographics. And I know that we sent out an instant alert this evening and also some emails. They will have links for elementary, middle school, and high school that you can pre-purchase their pictures. But I know a lot of our area schools have used this company, and very nice quality pictures. So, that's it on my side.
Awesome. Thank you.
Keith?
I'm sorry, I cheated. Eric told me he didn't have anything before the meeting.
Gotcha. No problem. Well, I don't have a whole lot since our last meeting either. Things are going pretty well for the beginning of the year. Our bus routes are running pretty smooth. No issues there. We met, we did meet the other day with the local PD and Deputy Hall, who is our one-day-a-week school resource officer, and reviewed some safety features. But other than that, I really don't have anything to report. It's been very quiet, in a good way.
That's good.
Very busy, but very quiet.
It's easier to be busy.
That's right.
Good. Outstanding. Okay. I need a motion, please, for minutes in financials.
I'll move.
I'll second.
Thanks, Steph. Thanks, Jen. Minutes from the regular board meeting of August 21, 2023. Treasurer's consent agenda items. Cash reconciliation as of August 31, 2023. Financial statements for August 2023. Approve amended official certificate of estimated resources for fiscal year 2024 as presented. Total general fund resources of $16,701,309.71. And total resource funds, total resources for all funds of $21,434,481,068. Approve fiscal year 2024 permanent appropriations as presented. Total general fund appropriations of $14,249,408.52. And total appropriations for all funds of $16,858,114.80. Approve the following then announce certificate as presented. Approve other financial documents as presented. Accept the following donations. $100 from Defiance County Agricultural Society for Art Club. $100 from Crawl Insurance Services LLC for cross-country. $273 from Clint and Angela Zedick for student admission to volleyball game. $500 from Hicksville Pharmacy and Home Medical for student admission to football game. $736 from Hicksville Athletic Boosters for student admission to football game. $2,200 from Hicksville Athletic Boosters for flags and huddle. And an assortment of rolls and cookies from Country Bake Shop for staff breakfast. That's awesome. That is really awesome.
Mike, do you have anything you want to add to any of this?
Well, there seems to be a theme today, which is quick, and I don't really have anything to add unless there's some questions.
All right. Roll call, please.
Mrs. Mazur?
Yes.
Mrs. Carrier?
Yes.
Mrs. Jones?
Yes.
Mr. Vedder?
Yes.
And Mr. Methman?
Yes. Motion carries five to zero. Another motion, please.
I'll move.
Thanks, Minda. Thanks, Eric. Recommend to approve the following supplemental contract for the 2023-2024 school year. David Moore, Assistant Junior High Football Coach. Recommend to approve the following as certified substitutes for the 2023-2024 school year. Mike Hedley, Rick Straley, Mallory Sarche. Roll call, please.
Mrs. Jones?
Yes.
Mr. Vedder?
Yes.
Mrs. Carrier?
Yes.
Mrs. Mazur?
Yes.
And Mr. Methman?
Yes. Motion carries five to zero. Another motion, please.
I'll move.
Thanks, Jen. Thanks, Steph. Recommend to approve John Adams as interim transportation supervisor at an hourly rate of $2,250 effective August 1, 2023. Recommend to approve Randy Guilford as a classified substitute for the 2023-2024 school year. Recommend to approve the following supplemental contract for the 2023-2024 school year. Mallory Sarche, cheerleading advisor, grades seven through eight. Roll call.
Mrs. Carrier?
Yes.
Mrs. Mazur?
Yes.
Mrs. Jones?
Yes.
Mr. Vedder?
Yes.
And Mr. Methman?
Yes. Motion carries five to zero. And another motion, please.
I'll move.
Thank you, Eric. Thanks, Minda. Recommend to approve a $4,483 dual-e cigarette settlement agreement with Altria Group Distribution Company. Any commentary on that?
Yeah, what is that one?
Yeah, what can it be used for?
Well, so my understanding, it's unrestricted, so we can use it pretty much for whatever we want to. Mr. Country and I were discussing the other day. We're looking at some AED equipment, so we're thinking about that could go help or something like that.
Was there an incident at Hicksville with this, or was it just genetic?
No, this is...
Class action.
It's not quite a class action, but it's something similar to that. And yeah, it's across the country, and there's like hundreds of millions of dollars, but there's like thousands, if not tens of thousands, of entities that are getting some funding back from it. So...
Based on your enrollment, the amount you get too, so...
Yeah, it was probably a good two years or so ago, and this came out, and we decided to, we didn't have much to lose, put our name in, go for it, and I guess it's worth $4,483.
Okay. Roll call, please.
Mr. Vedder?
Yes.
Mrs. Jones?
Yes.
Mrs. Carrier?
Yes.
Mrs. Mazur?
Yes.
Mr. Methman?
Yes. Motion carries five to zero. Another motion, please.
I'll move. I'll second.
Thanks, Steph. Thanks, Jen. Recommend to approve Resolution 2024-01 as follows. Resolution to make provisional changes to board policies and administrative guidelines and forms to comply with House Bill 33 as presented, and you'll thank me.
Okay, these are two different motions.
Are you sure you don't want to read that?
One, I think.
He went in and...
Yeah, there's a second. There's a second one for separate policies. We're not gonna, yeah.
Those are separate.
That's what we're gonna, right?
Yeah. We are going to keep this on?
We are going to keep that on.
Yeah, so we want, we want to make a motion on this one, or we did make a motion.
Right, yeah, we made one.
We made a motion.
We want to have roll call.
Okay. Roll call, please.
Mrs. Mazur?
Yes.
Mrs. Carrier?
Yes.
Mrs. Jones?
Yes.
Mr. Vedder?
Yes.
And Mr. Methman?
Yes. Motion carries five to zero. And another motion, please.
I'll move.
Thank you, Minda.
I'll second.
Thanks, Eric. Recommend to approve the following new and revised Board of Education bylaws and policies as presented, unless anyone would like me to read them.
So, really, there's just a couple that add that emergency cardiac...
Yeah. DEW.
That's kind of a current thing right now. And this thing about the cash, that was really big. But we allow cashing at our games, and we allow concession stands, so we're fine.
That was interesting, though, that that was. And yep. And then recommend to, sorry, recommend the purchase of one 84-passenger bus from Cardinal Bus Sales and Service Incorporated through the Ohio School Consortium Cooperative at a cost of $135,588.
I just want to point out, I looked it up, that my, the first bus I bought was my first year as superintendent, I think, and it was $85,000. And 10 years later, it's $135,000, and it takes a year to get it.
And there are no grants right now or anything?
No. In fact, our last bus that we purchased was in 2020, was like $95,000.
Yeah, so I knew it was an under...
It's increased like 40-plus percent in that timeframe.
And we also wanted it, well, the price is going up, did already, so we submitted...
That blocks it in.
Yeah.
So, does this price include like us putting on like our cameras and all of that stuff?
So, that's turnkey, then. Is that good? That's good. It's a good question.
I have one question. So, are we up to date with the new policies regarding the seizures protocol? There were some changes to that, like who had to do what?
Oh, that's October, it goes into effect October 3rd.
Okay.
Okay, roll call, please.
Mrs. Jones?
Yes.
Mr. Vedder?
Yes.
Mrs. Carrier?
Yes.
Mrs. Mazur?
Yes.
Mr. Methman?
Yes. Motion carries five to zero.
Jan, what was under the use of medications, right?
There's one in there on seizures.
Yeah, there was one specific to the seizures.
5337.
Because it talks specifically about not just the nurse, but another person being trained...
That's correct. Right.
Any old business?
I think Keith and I just wanted to let people know about November 17th, if they're interested in the Hicksville School Foundation fundraiser. You can get tickets from any of us that are on the board, and they are for sale here in the high school office, so it'll be a good time. Very reasonable.
I had a ball the last, last year. That was, that was fun.
And it's at a better place this year, so...
I have a question. Under new or discussion in reviewing the old, or our previous policies, and I ask because both myself and my coworker have gotten messages from other school districts who are essentially using crowdfunding. Like, it's just like I got a text message from a kid in another school district who's like, you know, they send you this nice little message, and here's a link you can donate, which is essentially crowdfunding because you're not doing anything for it, you just donate. Do we do any of that here?
There is some classroom, some teachers do, I think, in the elementary that...
I think our policy says not to.
And I'm not exactly sure how they go about doing that. Do you know? Huh?
Now, see, to me, to me, that doesn't seem like crowdfunding in the way, I don't know. When I looked it up, I mean, because these were just specific links to specific companies that just said, here, donate. It wasn't even like, here, I'm purchasing crayons for you. You know, this is just straight out, send me money.
Yeah.
So, it was just one of those things I, and it's funny because we talked about it at work, and another coworker had gotten the same message from a different school. And so, that's why I was like, I don't, you know, do we do any of that? It's getting very popular.
Well, per our board policy, we do not allow crowdfunding. So, unless that changes, we, our teachers and staff need to make sure they do not start doing that.
Okay, and what's the difference between that and putting on like Amazon wishlist? What do you share with me?
Well, to me personally, I would think because that Amazon wishlist is like your, it's almost like a wedding registry or a baby registry. You're purchasing a specific item for that person versus straight just...
Crowdfunding is just you're sending money?
You're just raising funds.
Mike, you see that as...
Well, I guess there is a difference, but I don't know if there is a difference. I don't know. That might be something...
I don't know. Are we talking about a thin gray line here?
It could be, I mean, it's something of value, so that might be something...
It's a product for the room. I mean, it's not like we're putting it into a big lump.
I would have to believe there's a difference between a specific item and just...
Match just straight on.
Yeah, just panhandling for money.
Just as a parent who, you see a lot of students who don't bring in what is required, it's kind of nice that my wife and I have to give something that is needed, just because we appreciate the teachers. So, I understand, I see the difference between funding, which is just straight, here's money, do with it what you need, as opposed to here's materials that I know someone in the classroom will need. So, I don't know if that has any...
On the flip side, the, that broadband of crowd is something that I hear more and more from other people that they like, because hey, I don't have to get something for this. All I do is donate to the school, and I'm done. So, that's the flip side of it.
I'm not opposed to it.
So, it's like something we should discuss when we talk about policies.
Yes. Well, and I was like, okay, does all of our staff know? I mean, because I know like a lot of, we have a lot of groups who do a lot of different fundraising and...
And how long did it take you to read through the policy handbook?
Five hours.
There you go. So, the answer probably is no.
Well, and that's... And I only brought it up because we literally got those messages within the last week, you know? So, it's just one of those things like, hey. And I'm not opposed because I don't want a 20-pound gallon thing of cookies in my freezer. I'd rather give money.
Well, as far as the crowdfunding and ensuring our staff is not doing that, I mean, Keith and I could send out a, an all email or something to the staff notifying that it's not in our policy.
Currently, yeah.
Yes.
So, that puts us somewhere between old business and discussion. Is there any, any more of either?
I don't want us getting out of here too early.
There is an association.
It wouldn't be the shortest. It's not the shortest email, or shortest meeting we've had, that's for sure, but it might be close.
So...
Oh, yeah. Yeah, we do have to do that, yeah.
Yep. There's an, there's an addendum that we need to have a motion for.
I'll second.
Thanks, Steph. Thanks, Jen. Recommend issuing a one-year limited contract to Tamara Shemal as paraprofessional with zero years' experience for the 2023-2024 school year, pending certification and background check.
What area will she be in after our discussion last month?
ELL.
Any other discussion? Any other discussion? Okay, roll call, please. Mrs. Mazur?
Yes.
Mrs. Carrier?
Yes.
Mrs. Jones?
Yes.
Mr. Vedder?
Yes.
And Mr. Methvin? Yes. Motion carries five to zero.
We do need a second session. I have to run.
All right. All right. I need a motion for executive session, please.
I will, sir.
Go ahead.
I'll second.
Thanks, Minda. Thanks, Eric. We'll go in at five minutes past the top of the hour, so that'll be 6:05.
Is this for number one, Keith?
It's for number one. And that concludes the public portion of the meeting. No further decisions will be made.
And next meeting is?
Oh, yeah.
October 16th.
16th. We don't need a roll call for adjournment yet, do we?
No, I'll have to come back.
Okay, all right.
Do we need to?
We do need to go into executive session, all right?
Yes.
Roll call, please. Did we have, oh, yes. Mrs. Jones?
Yes.
Mr. Vedder?
Yes.
Mrs. Carrier?
Yes.
Mrs. Mazur?
Yes.
And Mr. Methvin? Yes. I'll go on record as saying that is the most awkward procedure known to man.